Hello.
Hello.
Hello, everybody. If you can hear me, just so you can... Testing this out. Can y'all hear me?
Yes. Not your joke, oh, okay. Hi, Mr. St. Columbia.
Hello, I'm on, but I'm on my phone, not on my computer. You sent all the information to my phone, not to my computer, and that's why I'm on the phone.
Yeah. I've seen it there, your computer too, but I guess it hadn't made it yet.
Well, if it does, I'll go that way. But I don't, I can't see.
Me either.
Well. Um, so. In a while, looks soon. Oh, there's not more live here, I apologize, I'm not sure what I'm doing, but anyway. So my apologies because I'm a hell of a night and, uh... So I'll break this, I've only done this once before, uh, earlier this week, but, uh... I'll do my best, so I'll tell you, uh, we'll get through this, she's, she's returning from vacation tomorrow. Nobody is more eager to see her than I am.
I am.
Besides Sandy. Um, so, uh, I want to welcome everybody to the meeting and... We have everybody, um, I don't even know how to mute people, to be honest, um, I'm sure there's a way to do it. So, but I'm pretty sure... I don't know really, but I think you can unmute yourself. If I do by mistake, but I'm not muting anybody right now, so if you're muted, because you muted yourself. Sandy, the wedding room thing, figured it out, I think. So, um, anyway, my apologies for my awkwardness, we make sure we have one, two. Ever Jane, hey, Ever Jane. I think we're still wanting for maybe one more, so we can have a quorum.
Hello. Hello.
That sounded like Andre, is that you?
It's Bobby.
Bobby, I'm sorry, Bobby.
Okay.
And we can hear you, hold on, man. Now we can see you. Just wait until you get a quorum.
Hey, Joe.
Hey, Bobby, how are you?
I got this on my phone and I don't like it.
Ever Jane, while we got you, uh, we knocked down that brick duplex on Ohio Street.
I know, I was there, I was happy.
Bobby's, Bobby's out here, so you can thank him.
A good, a good job, I was, I was by there today.
Yes.
I'm back.
Leave your hair long, you look good, Miss Ford, leave your hair long.
Thank you, thank you.
Cut it out.
So I'm just waiting for, um, this nominee. Uh, I have two people, just, as I found some. So we're just waiting on one more council member, and we can call a quorum and get the meeting started.
All right.
Bobby, I think we're, uh, looking for, uh, Street. We've, uh, how many houses have we done on Ohio Street?
How many we done, Ohio Street?
In large, yeah. It's about all of them.
Uh, on Ohio Street, I think we approximately did one, two, three, four, six houses on Ohio Street. Can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah.
It did six on Ohio Street.
And it's made an impact too, and I like that impact clearing, you can tell that we've done work, uh, there.
Yes, ma'am.
They've done a great job.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Did they make the sixth house today, it would have been seven, so, uh, we hoping to tear the other house down tomorrow. Waiting on the lake to be disconnected.
Hey, Bobby, uh, it's Joe. It'd be a good idea if you could publicize this information, get it out to the public, so many people don't know what you're doing and, you know, and I think if you'll notify the press. That'll help.
We do, we get it out there.
Okay, uh, yeah, but okay, I, I would do that from now on.
Yeah, let them know what you're doing, where you're doing it, and, uh, that'll satisfy a lot of people, because they, they'll ask me, I don't see nothing happening, well, no, because they're not down on Ohio Street, you know.
Yes, I mean, we move up over now, it, it ain't just Ohio Street.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, we move in different wards.
Right, I understand, but I mean, they don't know what you're doing, and you need to let them know, if you are working every day, they think we're not doing anything. Once a week, you know.
They're just not tearing down, they're just not tearing down houses either, they're fixing, uh, water leaks also, we had a bad one over here down the street from me, and, and they came out today or spring and had it fixed.
Yeah.
Repair.
Y'all have, has the council meeting started yet?
Well, I was gonna say, Chris Franklin.
I mean, it was just a council business, that's what, that's all I'm saying.
Oh, yeah. I, I, you know what, I was advertising, letting people know what we're, what we're doing, but, uh, I thought we were waiting on the quorum.
We were, uh, we were with Chris, um... Again, uh, for those that didn't hear my apologies earlier, I'm having to be Ellen today, tonight, she's, uh, she'll be back. And I'm trying to make sure everybody who asked to be admitted, admitted, second. And there's Monica, so we do have a quorum, uh... I'm gonna try to get this meeting started, and at the same time, I'll be on the lookout for me, I have to admit them, I had to admit people who may... Log in, so I'm trying to be vigilant, let me also say that on, as well as... But I will pop up on the bottom, I'll try my best to, uh, to keep, uh... I do not know how to mute people, so... You'll touch the bottom of your screen, I mean, people will come up, and you can, and that helps with background noise, so if you're hearing that ringing or whatever, makes it kind of difficult to hear. Yeah. Just mute yourself until it's time to speak. I don't have YouTube, here's a way to do this, maybe I'll figure it out, hold on, somebody else. My apologies, this is probably gonna be awkward meeting, because I don't... I feel like I'm, there's somebody trying to get in, but I don't... This is the Helena West Town City Council, two, two thousand, two hundred and twenty-two, two, two... Want to welcome everybody, including, uh, Helena West Town, Helena West Town, and KJIW, and anybody else, our guests, or any other media I didn't see there. Also, any of our guests here logged in, we have, uh, we have, and we appreciate you, uh, joining us tonight. So we'll call the meeting order, and Ms. Sandy, if you could call the...
Davis.
Here.
St. Columbia. Crockett. Franklin.
Here.
Ethel Lee.
Uh, this is Andre Val, and Mr. Ethel is in the, is, is in the waiting room, uh, mayor, he needs to let him in.
Okay, I'm trying. We had somebody. It's, be the, um, Ms. Sandy, could you go ahead with the minutes while I try to figure out how to let Mr. Ethel in?
Okay, we have the minutes of June the sixteenth, that would be the first one, I emailed them to you Saturday, I believe. And then the second set would be July the seventh.
Okay, we'll give you a chance to look at those minutes, I think I did finally get Mr. Edelbe in. So, um, any, any questions about the minutes, again, uh, I would just ask you, first of all, mute yourself, uh, if you can, if you're not speaking, reduces the background noise, makes it easier for everyone to hear. I'll do that too, when I'm, when I'm not talking, um, and any, any question, members of the council regarding the minutes, uh, was it June?
June the sixteenth, yes, June sixteenth.
Mad, is there a motion to adopt the minutes from June sixteenth? You have to unmute yourself to make a motion.
Some move, Joe, say, some move.
I think Ms. Davis made a motion, Mr. St. Columbia, you want to second that?
I'll second it, yeah.
Any comments on the minutes of June sixteenth have not called?
Could we do just a voice vote, mayor? Make it easier?
I'm off for four votes. All in favor of adopting the minutes from June sixteenth, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, uh, Ms. Sandy, you want to say the next minutes are July the seventh, is that right?
July seventh, yes.
Everybody had a chance to look at? Maybe want to make a motion to adopt those?
Joe, St. Columbia moved, we adopted.
The St. Columbia moves, the minutes, July the seventh, is there a second?
Second.
Um, is, is that you, Miss Ford?
Uh, Dave's gonna... It's fine.
I'm sorry, say your name if you would, I can't see her, but, um, when you do, it might...
Go ahead, Davis.
Ms. Davis second.
I'm sorry, Monica Davis, second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Does no? Okay, we've prepared the minutes, thank you very much, and Mr. Turner, you're right. Hello. Mr. Turner, you want to give the treasurer's report, that's...
Yeah, I just want to give a quick update on, uh, situation at the landfill, as far as finance, uh... I feel like, in the financial report, it shows a, a change in fund balance or operating loss of thirty-five thousand dollars, uh... But, they had revenues, you take the revenues, you take the expenditures, they had about a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollar loss, uh, the land, uh, the general fund pumped in about a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars into the land here. And, uh, put the, uh, change in fund balance down to a negative thirty-five thousand dollars, but they remained a little bit above water, because they also paid about two hundred thousand dollars of their expenses, uh, out of the general fund. Although the revenues are a little bit, revenues are slightly above projections right now, uh, we had to pay, as the council, it's where we had to pay about a thousand dollars for the line. So, but it continues to have some difficulties, and that's why we, in the general fund, we showed a...
Turn that light off, too.
In the general fund, we show a loss of a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars so far for the year, but that's primarily because we had to pay, um, kicking about two hundred and ninety thousand dollars for the general fund. But, uh, on the good side, um, the, the, the fire department didn't have any overtime, uh, as far as the first payroll of the year, and the police department continues to remain under budget so far, for the, uh, so far for the year, and overtime as well. So, since you guys have an answer report, if you have any questions, uh, you can ask me a question now, or if you have to review it, just give me a call or send me an email, come back office.
Any questions for Mr. Turner?
I have a couple of questions. Hey, Ms. Turner, how you doing today?
I'm doing good, Mr. Franklin, how are you?
You know, on, Mr. Franklin, somebody has her, thank you, hit their button, uh, we're getting feedback, feedback, it's hard here. Go ahead, Mr. Turner.
Uh, Mr. Turner, so, uh, what I, I got a couple of questions. You said the, the landfill had a, a shortage, or, what did I buy me, what happened with the landfill?
Yeah, uh, uh, for the first six months so far, um, they, on the books, and the reporters show they have a, a shortage, they were, uh, had an operating loss of thirty-five thousand dollars, a little bit over thirty-five thousand dollars, but that's primarily because of the, the lines of sale still, and, but, um... General fund was definitely paid for that.
Okay. Okay, so, uh, and you said, uh, with the fire department, uh, they...
They didn't have overtime, this, this pay period.
Okay, so, right, right now, what's the, what's the magic number for the whole year, what have the, what have the fire, fire department used so far?
Uh, well, as far as June, well, yeah, but they didn't have...
For, for, for the whole year, what they use for the...
They didn't have it in class.
Okay.
So, yeah, let me look at this.
Is somebody able to mute at everybody else's microphone?
What, uh?
Can somebody mute all the other microphones, we got some sound coming through, and...
Yeah, I don't know where it's coming from.
The line that keeps showing green is, is someone named Diane's iPhone, and it keeps, it keeps, uh, popping up, you can hear it going in the car, he, here, uh, all the background.
Yeah, and, and I've, I've been saying, before you got on there, Helen is, uh, will be back tomorrow, she is always running these meetings, I don't know how to mute people, uh, from here, I'm running the meeting, instead of Helen, and it's only the second time I've done this, so my apologies, I've been sitting here trying to figure out how to do that, and I can't figure out how to mute somebody. It sounds like I care.
I think that, I think that person is gone now. That person is gone now.
Okay.
Thank you, so go ahead and, and with what you were saying, Mr. Turner, sorry.
Yeah, Mr. Franklin, so far, as of June, uh, the overtime in the fire department is a hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred and fifty-one dollars, no, it's a hundred and, yeah, a hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars and ninety-seven cents. And so what you did, you appropriated some funds to, uh, last city council meeting, and so they aren't over budget right now, and they didn't have any overtime, uh, the past pay period, this current pay period. Did you hear him, Mr. Franklin?
Yes, sir, I heard you, I was, what is the, so where are we with the police department, how, where are they on overtime right now?
The police department is currently... Police department is, they have eighty-one thousand, two hundred and ninety-six dollars, so they're about eighteen thousand dollars under budget so far.
You said eighty-one thousand dollars in what?
Eighty-one thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars and forty-six cents.
Okay, okay.
Eighteen thousand, three hundred and three dollars and fifty-four cents under budget.
Okay, so, what, what about, what about you, your, your street sanitation department?
Now, right now, sanitation is over budget because of that storm, a lot of that, but, a lot, they went, I think it was April, or that, early that first May pay period is when they had a big jump, but a lot of that was due to the storm, they are, uh, they had ten thousand, um... In the budget, and they have eighteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one dollars and eighty-one cent in overtime. So they're over about eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars and eighty-one cents.
That, that's both departments combined, right?
No, it's the sanitation.
Okay, sanitation, so?
Streets, uh, let me look at the street. The street is under, street is under budget, they have over two thousand dollars in overtime.
Okay, okay, what about, uh...
So you, if you put those two together, they probably, they pretty much break an even.
Yes, sir, so, what should I do, so, let me get lit, what, what about landfill?
Landfill, um... Let me see what that budget is first, landfill has thirty-two thousand dollars in budget, and I'm thinking they had ten thousand dollars in, um... Budgeted, but, um, they had a lot of, um... You know, we, instead of, uh, they, they did a lot of dirt work to put the... Line in, instead of hiring the people that we got the line from to come do it, we did a lot of the dirt work ourselves, and so they had a lot of overtime, but I think they're about, let me check and make sure if that's what this budget says, the budget for them was ten thousand dollars, so it looks like they're about twenty thousand, I was over.
Twenty, twenty thousand dollars over?
Yeah.
Okay, so, quick, so I have a question for the mayor, so what about your water department and code enforcement, the last two?
Uh, code enforcement is, they had, you know, you guys appropriated their, their, um... They have only three hundred dollars, and that's what the appropriation is, let me make you pay exactly what it is. Uh, overtime for the code enforcement department was three hundred and thirty-three dollars and fourteen cents, and that's what you guys appropriated, you know, last time we just brought the appropriation from that. I don't have any information as, for the overtime for the water department.
Okay, so, uh, ju- just looking at those, uh, Mr. Mayor, have you, uh, I'm pretty sure where you saw these numbers, uh, with the, with the fire, police and fire, uh, we... We have like a workshop, to, to kind of workshop to talk about police and fire, uh, it's getting these, in the hot months, and we need to try to make sure the police department have, uh, what they need to make sure they can be read, read correctly. Uh, Mr. Turner, I thank you, that's all the questions I have for you, I thank you so much, answered my question, thank you so much.
No problem.
Okay, thank, thank Mr. Turner, Mr. Franklin, um, any other questions for Mr. Turner? And just remember, you have to unmute yourself. If not, uh, thank you, Mr. Turner, uh, the next item, and I'm not sure if I'm working from the absolute latest agenda, but, uh, but it's a good time to talk about it anyway, the Bill Dance Fishing Tournament, August twenty-first. As it turns out, because there won't be any street closures or other disruption of, or use of city park, any of those things, we don't actually have to have an event permit approval. I guess we can do it if we want to, but it's not required, what was required, uh, was the Department of Arcs, our Heritage Delta Cultural Center approval of the use of the stage and that area around the stage, and that required approval of a COVID-nineteen plan, well, an application, but also a COVID-nineteen plan approved by Dr. Nate Smith himself. At the Health Department, and, uh, of course, he can't do that at the last minute, anyway, we submitted those documents, and I'm happy to say they were approved, I'd be glad to take any questions about it, but basically, uh, the Arc, the, uh, Helena, Helena, the Helena, um... I'm sorry, Parks, uh, excuse me, the, um, Promotion Tourism, I kept wanting to say Parks, uh, Commission, uh, approved this event and funding for it, Partners Bank is also matching, uh, their support for it. The, some of our venues around here, or some of our hotels have already booked, the, this is not a new thing, we've had catfish tournaments before, but Bill Dance is sort of the biggest marquee draw for catfish tournaments. And, um, and he wanted to come here, because this is actually where he comes when he fishes for fun, he's known for bass fishing, he helped start bass fishing, the Bass Pro Shop, uh, empire, he doesn't own that, uh, but he's probably their most famous or well-known, uh, spokesperson behind it, and he did get, uh, what's now known as Bass Pro Shops, started in the sixties and seventies. He's now doing for catfish what he did for bass, because big cat, catfishing is his actual love, it's, bass is his job, catfish is what he loves, and he's been coming down here for years, and, um... He came to the tournament last year as a participant and offered to ho- offered to move his his personal tournament here. They only have three. And um. The way that works, that's even without COVID. It's it's a pretty COVID-friendly event because they stay in their three people. Uh minimum of a hundred boats. They must stay in their boat during their weigh-in. Of course, they're in their boat, and they're fishing, and fishing itself is a. Social distancing thing because you don't want to be around other fishermen, around your fishermen, uh around your catfish hole. Uh but you do have two or three hundred spectators. You do have people on the stage. Um so those issues are still bit very COVID-related, but they're nothing like, say, the Blues Festival where you're dealing with thousands of people. So our goal here was to show how you could do some events that are sort of, for lack of a better word, COVID-friendly anyway. Um manageable events and do them well. Um or do them correct correctly so that we minimize what the last thing anybody wants, and one reason all of these events are most of. Most events, not these events, but most events get canceled is because it is almost impossible to manage a crowd. And nobody wants to have a spike in these uh and in in the coronavirus because you had a huge event. Um, these events aren't gigantic, but they uh do bring money to the community. Uh they've already booked the Edwardian and part of the Best Western, which they're giving twenty percent discounts to people who uh apply for the tournament. It's a big event. I won't spend any more time on it, but I'll take any questions. We don't have to approve an event permit, as it turns out, uh but I would take any questions at this point. Um, okay. Um, thank you very much, and thank you to the A and P Commission and the members of it, uh especially. So then the next item on the agenda that we are going to talk about anyway, uh we are actually, we can come back to these. If someone asks to, but um is the invoice approval for the water department. From reached construction and the amount of nine thousand dollars for three days of service uh at the state highway. Back, what was the day of this invoice? June twenty-fourth. Um, Mr. Carter called me about an emergency water leak problem located at Highway forty-nine in the residential and commercial district adjacent to it. Um and felt very strongly that we could not wait any longer to uh it was an emergency outbreak. That affected our businesses and residences, not to mention the the new pavement out there. That would require them to bore under forty-nine, which is what makes it expensive. And that was uh the the extent of the work. Uh, he felt like it was an emergency, and that was the invoice. So and it says emergency down at the bottom. So I would entertain any questions about that at this point.
I have a question.
Mr. Franklin.
From the since that's a that's a state highway, will we receive any kind of uh reimbursement from the state for that?
No, because it was a city water problem, and we didn't we didn't actually have to break up the uh asphalt. I understood it. We bored underneath it.
Okay, I I so move.
Mr. Franklin moves approval. Is there a second?
Second.
I think that was Ms. Ford, right?
Ford's second, yes.
Uh motion in the second adoption of the uh invoice from the water department. For the June service out on Highway forty-nine. Any any other questions or discussion? If not, call the row.
Franklin?
Yes.
Davis? Etherly?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Rocket? Columbia? Five, yes.
Motion passes. Um, thank you very much. Um. Okay, next item agenda, uh let me just introduce this by saying that as many of you know, uh. Ms. Naomi Condoms, who I believe is present at the meeting. Ms. Condoms, make sure you're unmuted, and Chief Smith. Appointed what I would call, I call it the Condoms Committee is what I actually call it, but it's it's the Racial Equity Task Force, and we've been meeting. I think except maybe for July, it was July fourth week. We've been meeting pretty regularly, had some very good meetings. Uh, one was a social distancing masked up physical meeting, and we've had several virtual meetings, but very good meetings. It's a good task force, and. They're all working very hard and diligently, and it's been a eye-opening. A good experience for me. So at this point, there are two items especially that the task force has been working on, and I'd like to uh recognize Ms. Condoms and Chief Smith, if you would. Uh, these are items. Uh, the first item is something for your consideration, which is just being introduced tonight. Uh for your consideration over the next couple of weeks, we're not, I don't believe anybody's going to ask you to do anything on it, except to listen to them tonight and to. Uh do your best to read it over the next couple of weeks and uh and consider it for approval then. The second thing is the Hate Crimes Ordinance, which. I hope uh we'll we'll listen to uh. Uh, Mr. Valley here in a minute about that too, but um. And we'll talk about that in a minute. I'll just say that personally, I voted for that when it was a state law or a bill in the state senate. And it passed the state senate, and this was in the early or mid nineties. And I guess the House did not pass it, and it never became law. Today, Arkansas is one of only three or four states without a hate crimes law. What does a hate crimes law duh duh do? It enhances the Senate. It doesn't have anything to do with uh charging someone. With the crime by itself, but if you've been charged, for example, arson is a good example because it's been used. And the arson turns out to be motivated by race, then you can enhance the penalty for that crime if convicted. Uh because of this uh law. The uh for some reason I don't understand, all these years later, Arkansas still has not approved a passed a law, but the city of Little Rock was the first city. About a week or two weeks ago to adopt a local ordinance, hate crimes ordinance. And uh your task force would like you to consider uh Helena West Helena being. Um possibly the second. I haven't heard of any other cities in the past one, so I think we might be the second city. Um, so with that, I'm going to introduce Ms. Condoms and Chief Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. To start off, uh what we're trying to do based off the uh racial inequality task force and the Helena West Helena Police Department. As we are all are aware, June sixteenth of of this year, the President of the United States uh passed an executive executive order. On police reform, and that reform is actually stating that police need to be more transparent. And assess their credentials, certifications, and their policies and procedure. What the Helena West Helena Police Department would like to do is to allow the members of the city council along with the city attorney. Mr. Valley to review those policies that we're implementing. If if we could, if we can remember uh the Helena West Helena Police Department, last time our policy and procedure were revised. Was back in two thousand and six. Since that time, it has not been revised. The main thing is that we're passing a mandated order from not only the president, but the governor of Arkansas on duty to intervene. What that says is any law enforcement officer, whether he or she is on duty duty or off duty. Then any violation that they see that another officer is violating an individual's civil rights. Or uh any type of police brutality is going to be our duty to report this. Uh not only to report this, but uh get sufficient documentation to actually to intervene in any violation of someone's civil rights. What we're asking city council tonight to do is to review those policies and procedure. It's on the desk, uh Mr. Valley. I've spoken with him earlier this week in regards to the policy, and he will look over these policies. Now, these policies have already been through the municipal league, uh lawyers of the municipal league, along with the uh members of the Arkansas Association of Chiefs of Police, which I'm a member of. Uh I'm on the legislation branch of that have reviewed these policies. But the main thing that we're looking at is use of force, racial profiling, uh duty to intervene intervene. And also, we're looking at our training. Earlier this year, uh actually October of twenty nineteen. The city council had already implemented and passed the ordinance, uh excuse me, a policy, passed our policy. Stating that we will raise our uh requirements of training on the mandated hours that the state had allocated, which was sixteen hours. Fifty-six hours for continuous training. Also, in April of twenty nineteen, city council also uh passed. A policy that we implemented on our body cam uh footage, being able to give total transparency to the public. Most of you have already got this documentation. At respect to the city attorney, Mr. Valley, to look over those things and review them. And at some point, we're asking, along with the Racial Inequality Task Force, we have re looked over those policies. They have asked questions in regards to those policies. Go ahead and pass that and implement it to the uh Helena West Helena Police Department. Uh our big thing is that we want to be uh very clear to the public and our citizens of Helena West Helena. That we are committed to making social change, not only social change, but allowing our officer. To get the wellness that they need and the training they need to combat some of the issues that we have have in our community. So tonight, I'm asking each member of the city council to sit down at your leisure. If you have any questions or concerns regarding of the policy, please uh contact me, and I'm asking Mr. Valley, city attorney. Uh look over those policies at some point where we can go ahead and adopt those and revise our policies and procedures for twenty twenty.
Thank you, uh Chief, and thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. We really appreciate the opportunity to bring this before you. And we're actually hoping that you guys can make this happen uh at your next meeting, which I believe is set for August fourth. And so uh we tried to get it to you before this meeting. There are two weeks in between, and so we're hoping that Attorney Valley can actually review. And that it can be actually presented to you for a decision uh at your next council meeting.
Uh, great. Thank you both of you. Uh any questions for either? There are Ms. Condoms on that, uh on the issue of the uh Helena West Helena Police Department manual.
I I this is Chris Franklin. I'd like to say thank you, Chief Smith, and Ms. Condoms for working on something like this uh in this time. That we go throughout when we go through the nation itself, but just thank you all for working on it for us.
We're actually, we're actually honored, and the chief has done a really fantastic job at what's in the book. It's about five hundred and eleven pages. And so that's why we hope you will go through it uh with a fine tooth comb. I believe it will address all of the. Demands as it relates to reform that our nation is calling for, and I believe we're ahead of the game, so we hope hope you will consider it.
So thank you. Looking forward to receiving it.
And and about that, I think, uh Ms. Sandy, we've emailed it out. It it's a it's a very lengthy document. And I want to say that they uh want to make sure you know the task force took uh bits and pieces of it and distributed it among members of the task force to read over several weeks. So it has been thoroughly uh read, I feel, but it is a lengthy document, so don't print it out. Don't hit print. Uh try to read it on your computer if you can. We're going to ask you to. We're going to put this on the agenda in a couple of weeks, and hopefully, if you could. Try your best to get through it between now and then, and um. Have any questions ready and and that sort of thing, and I think also this is a good segue to introduce Mr. Valley, uh because he also has to read it. And ultimately approve it, I believe. Uh, Mr. Valley, would you like to be recognized to talk about that and also to move on into the hate crimes ordinance?
Uh yes, Andre Valley for the record. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh thank you, uh city council members, as well as Ms. Condoms and Chief uh Smith. The city does need to revise and update its policies and procedures for the police department. Uh, last year, the chief and I had been meeting about it. We'd gone through some of the revisions of it, and I think at that time, we'd gone through a fossil half of it. Uh, but it is five hundred and eleven pages, and we will review it. Uh, much of this is 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 legal language. Uh, just legal policies that are rooted in law and eluded in in the case law. And so uh I will I will continue to review it and review it for for the next uh city council meetings and agenda. There were some slight things that I had noticed last year when I looked through it. I have to go back and look at it again. That were different from what our policy manual says, and those were little things that we wanted to work out. When I say our policy, I mean our city council personnel handbook. Uh, but we will address those small things and 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 get them uh changed as well, so that we can be in uh so the two documents will agree with each other. Uh, but I think it's time for an update. Uh, it took us in two thousand and six, it took us months to review all that. This is probably three, four hundred pages as well. Um, and so it's it is it is time for it to be updated. It's twenty twenty, and that's two thousand and six, so uh I I welcome the opportunity to do so. Uh as it relates to the hate crimes uh ordinance, uh the hate crimes ordinance is is the mayor said appropriately that it was. There are only five states in the United States that do not have hate crime uh statutes, and Arkansas is one. The Little Rock, the city of Little Rock has taken the lead in adopting a hate crime, as the mayor properly described it. It is an enhancement of of existing things. It is it is rooted in not only race, because all the time we hear hate, we only hear race. There's race, religion, sexual orientation, uh national origin, uh it's it's several different factors. Uh other than just race, where a person may be acting rooted in hate, and it calls for uh to be more specific, reading uh. In it, it says race, color, creed, religion, ancestry, gender, gender identity, sexual orientation, physical or mental disability, or national origin. Or any individual group of groups, regardless of existence of any other motivating factors. If the person is found to have have committed an offense, with any of those being the root of of the offense. Uh then the penalties for the misdemeanor can be enhanced. Um, it is something that that uh. The mayor and I had discussed today, and it's something that we both agree that that probably the city of Helena West Helena should go on record to do. Uh, I think Ms. Ms. Ramsey has emailed you a copy of it, asked that you review review it. Uh, the one thing I don't want is for you all to feel like we're forcing stuff down your throat, and so I would like you to have an opportunity to review it. Uh, this ordinance, I told the mayor that I probably haven't read it tonight. It has computer issues, but with, I don't see anything to change other than the the. City of Helena West Helena, a few and a few little little things like that in this ordinance, and we can adopt this ordinance as is. Uh, I would encourage you to download and read it. Uh, the city clerk, Ramsey, said everyone a copy of it uh last week, I believe. But if you check your emails, you don't have email, then check your box at City Hall so that you can get a copy of it so you can review it. Um, and and have a discussion about it and know what it is that you're voting for and be able to articulate uh the precise basis why you adopt it. Uh, I want to commend the the committee. I want to commend Ms. Condoms and and the chief and the mayor on the work that they're doing to try to improve the police department. I think it's the it is paramount that that our police department uh become one of the excellent police departments in the state of Arkansas. Uh, standards are vital for police departments. I, as a price is a turn. I, as a practicing attorney, with the effort as a practicing attorney, it must, the mayor, as a practicing insurance agent, we all have standards. And if you fall below those standards, then there are consequences you reviewed. And when you review, then there are procedures in place to deal with people who go astray. I think that the goal of Chief Smith, he's told me numerous times, is to make this police department an exemplary police department. That is at his heart, and he's stressed it to me many times. And so he's ready to move forward, and I'm ready to move forward with him and the mayor as well. And many of you council members have already expressed your, I think we're all in unity on that issue. So I look forward to completing the policy manual and this ordinance, and we discuss them at the next meeting. With that, I yield to anyone who may have any questions or comments or concerns.
So am I understanding, is it appropriate for me to ask the question?
Yes, Ms. Collins.
Okay, so am I understanding that both documents will come before the council at the next meeting?
That is my intent. Andre Valley for the record, that's my intent, that both documents will come before the council next meeting.
Thank you, sir.
Now, because of five hundred and eleven pages, I don't know if the council is ready to vote on the policy manual. But it was my intent to have it. Take it ahead.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Well, thank you, Ms. Valley, and yeah, I'm glad you pointed that out. It's not just race. In fact, what I remember that galvanized the nation's attention back in the nineties when it was first presented to the Arkansas Senate, was a situation where a young man, he was gay, was drugged behind a truck down a rocky road until he died. And because he was gay, was the, I don't remember his name, it was a long time ago, but it galvanized the attention of the country. And that along, I think we had a rash of church burnings around the same time. And I still don't understand why Arkansas has yet to act on it. Again, you can't be charged with a solitary act of a hate crime. I think people that rail against it make that presumption, or they started out with that, and that's just not right. You have to be convicted of another crime. But if it was done because of a hate-based reason, as identified in the law, then your penalty can be enhanced. And so I hope that we can become a city that adopts this, and I think it would be a good thing. So anyway, thank you, Mr. Valley and Ms. Collins and Chief Smith. Any other questions before we move on? Okay, all right, well, thank you very much. And we're going to move now to, I'm going to flip on you really quickly, because this thing will take not very long and we can knock it off. Y'all are familiar with the Integrity Project. You were present when it was approved before my time and when Mayor Hallwell was mayor. On July the twenty-fourth, the cellar field, which is out by the airport, will have a flip the switch ceremony for the cellar panels. If you haven't been out that way, you should go by, it's pretty cool. We're going to have a combination, a physical meeting and virtual meeting. All of the council members are invited, as well as Mayor Hallwell, as well as former council members who were on the council at the time it was approved. And hope that all of you can attend, and I believe there's a flyer attached. It is an important event, and I hope y'all can all attend. All right, moving back to request of the council. And so we have, we had a numerous number of things. So what we'll just start with is mowing, abandoned structures, flooding issues, and so forth. And I'll read this for others who might not have it. This discussion of mowing, abandoned structures, flooding issues, budget for grass cutting, overtime fireplace, hiring and job openings, revenue loss, wearing mask, code enforcement officer will be on. And I'll look for him here in a minute. So I'm going to turn that over. Ashley, if there's no objection, because he has been working overtime and I'm, Bobby Jones, our director of street sanitation. If you want to just brief the council on where we are, many of those, well, the fireplace, overtime, some of that's not yours, but a lot of that is, the first part of it is anyway. If you want to just address this, of all the activities you've been doing here recently in your department, I'll recognize you, and then the council can ask questions or whatever they like to do. So, Mr. Jones, you're recognized.
Yes.
Are you on there, Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, good evening. All right, so far, we've been cutting. Am I on?
Yes, we hear you.
Okay, so far, we've been cutting, I wanted to discuss cutting around a lot of abandoned houses. I spoke with Greg on Monday, I spoke with Mr. Gant also on Monday. And right now, we need some funds for coal enforcement, because myself and a couple of my guys, we're going around now, cutting abandoned lots, vacant lots, abandoned houses, cutting around the houses. And we need some help. We actually need, I mean, I didn't postpone it now, hiring more manpower, because the mayor did allow me to hire five more new employees, and I got two more coming, which would give us seven by Monday. And so far, we actually borrowed some more equipment to get caught up with some of this grass cutting. But our biggest problem is going to be with these vacant lots, that we're not getting a dime for. And I'm asking, you know, I have asked the coal enforcement and both coal enforcement to try to help me out, work with me, where we can send out some citations for the grass that we couldn't, anything to try to bring in some revenue. Like I say, we're not getting one dime for me getting out cutting these lots. And I'm asking if y'all can appropriate some money for coal enforcement, where they can get a crew to come in, you know, to do all the cutting for, you know, the vacant lots and tearing down the house, which I would be participating in too. And if anybody got any more questions, I'm here to answer any question you want to ask.
I got a question, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir.
And it's you and the mayor both.
Okay.
Now, Mayor, you remember when I was, it was saying that I cut the code enforcement position? You remember that, Mr. Mayor? Mr. Jones, are you still there?
The mayor needs to unmute his mic.
Yeah, I'm sorry, what was the question? Do I remember you cutting the code enforcement? Yes, I do. Hello?
I didn't, I didn't cut it, we froze it, because I knew when it came to the summer that there would be these kind of questions. So if I, if we froze the position, that if you're going to use the money, as Mr. Jones said, he needs some help, well, you can use that money right there, instead of hiring another body, and hire a crew of people to come in and tear those houses down, whether they be torn down. That's what we did, that's what our mind was, because I didn't think you should just go hire somebody when the summertime going to come, and you take the buck of that money that we have left due to someone leaving, due to Mr. Smith leaving. You can take the buck of that money and use that money for just the summer to clean that up. And back to you, Mr. Jones, we have, there is fifty thousand dollars in the budget, am I right, Mr. Turner? To hire people to cut the grass during the summer, do a summer cleanup, am I right, Mr. Turner?
No, the fifty thousand dollars that you're, I believe that the fifty thousand dollars that you're referring to is for demolition.
No, 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 Ms. Davis, Ms. Davis, if I'm wrong, you remember you asked us to put fifty thousand dollars for grass cutting and demolition, all that into one, because Ms. Davis clearly said that she didn't want it to become of the summer that we didn't have no money put aside. I remember that, that's what happened, we put.
Mr. Franklin, I'm not sure Mr. Turner would probably know where the money was put. I remember him mentioning it, I remember talking about it. But he probably could look and tell us exactly where the money is and what it's supposed to be used for.
Well, when you, when you, it's, it's, it's my understanding, because I thought it would be a good idea, because we would, we would normally, in the past years, before I even got elected, they would have summer workers to help cut grass or do stuff like that. That's what, that's what I thought we would be doing, because Mr. Jones had had people to leave. I know four people have left. So a crew of five can't keep the whole city cut, and we hadn't stayed this long before.
I agree.
Mayor Smith, we, we have stayed this long before Mayor Smith got here. That has been our biggest, take care of this grass, on forty-nine to the boat in the rest area. All those things cut, so people could see. And other state projects that need to be done, we've tried our best to make sure that this has got done, and it's repeated over and over and over. I do, I do agree that we need to do something about it, and we have tried. That's why we put fifty thousand dollars. I'm sure, Ms. Davis, I remember, I'm sure that we put that money in there for the grass cutting, because that was one of your issues, that you, every year, you all said grass, we all said grass.
It's always one of my issues, yes.
Right, so that's what I think, that's what that fifty thousand dollars, which, that's why I voted, because I think that'd be something that we need to get done. Because if the, if the state don't cut, I hear about Delta A-hack and stuff right here, they seem like trying to let us cut, take that to cut, cut it to keep our city looking good. Because when you drive into town, when you're driving out of town, around these lots, yeah, some of these lots don't belong to us, but that's what people have to realize. We're trying, that's when the code enforcement will come in to try to contact these owners about these properties. I wish some of these property owners would give, give the property up, so people could try to build houses in these areas. I mean, that's what I was trying to work, get the mayor at the beginning of his term to talk to, to partner with Southern Bancorp or Partners Bank, so they can care about the community with us, to try to, when these people get their taxes, like people get ten thousand dollar taxes, try to get them to help the person buy the lot, or use their tax to buy the lot to build some kind of home, to make, to make our community look a lot better than what it is, because people who own these lots are not here. And I'm hoping that we can, we can come to a solution tonight to do some with these lots, or in the whole town.
Well, let me, yeah, I want to, this is probably a good point to interject. There's been a great meeting at Reverend Cannon's Church, Still Standing Neighborhood Organization, Chief Smith particularly has led a really encouraging effort. And they have volunteered, I'm not disagreeing with anything anybody said, by the way. I just want you to know about this. They have volunteered to cut the grass, for example, the Elwooder School across the street. They're volunteering their services, and they're mowing that grass. And some of the other lots, they've taken over, not taken over, but they've taken ownership, I should say, of some of the grass and cleanup issues in that area of town where that church is and just north of Plaza there. They had a meeting last night, but it's the chief, it's probably been two or three meetings. One of the most encouraging things I've seen anyways, since being mayor, because it is a daunting task. And it is something that we all have to put our shoulder to the wheel to accomplish, especially when it rains every day, and it has almost every day since Easter until the last ten days. And then even then, it rained yesterday, I think. And that gets us way behind when it does that. But at any rate, and Bobby, I think is still on here and had said, and I'm certainly not opposed to hiring summer workers, not at all, as long as they're on a contract basis and not W-2, which I think everybody agrees with anyway. Mr. Jones is in charge of grass cutting, and so I would definitely ask him to weigh in on that. But I did want to, I did want to point out this, this neighborhood association and encourage more of that. It's a spread out city intended for about twenty thousand people or more. And we don't have the tax base anymore to keep up with that much roadway. On Forest Street, Highway forty-nine, I have pounded the table as much or more than anybody to get the state to do its part. We're still fighting that fight, and I'm not going to give that fight up. I've offered to, for them to contact with the city to do the work. It's not very much money, I don't think, but at least we would be in charge of it, it might help us some. And we could be in charge of it, instead of having to watch, to look at this every year. We actually do cut some of the state highway right away, because it becomes hazardous, and they don't do it. They won't do it in timely fashion, for sure. So we're already taking on that, not to mention all the lots that have been mentioned. There's no question that it's a daunting task to get all this grass mowed. When it rains every day, then you have a smaller period of time. And all of you, as well as I have heard loudly from constituents, and rightfully so. So it is a challenge, I just want to acknowledge that. But what they're doing over in Still Standing and that Neighborhood Association is truly remarkable. It really is. And if we can encourage more of that, and I applaud Chief Smith and the people there for what they're doing. And go ahead, I'm sorry.
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Ford?
This is Monica Davis. I appreciate that association and Mr. Jones and Mr. Gant and Mr. Williams, and everybody is working hard. But at the end of the day, we still have a problem with our abandoned houses and our high grass and lots. I've been on this council for a while. Every year, when we're getting ready to do the budget, I have a complaint, I have a concern about the same thing as far as putting money in there. When the summer rolls around, there's a huge issue. I mean, I feel like finance, ordinance, laws, city issues, all those things are important. But also, the beautification of our city is important. And I don't think we are really addressing it. I understand, yes, it's raining, but we still have houses, houses after houses, blocks after blocks, with just houses, abandoned houses, that nobody's there, no one's lived in for years, no windows, no doors, piles of trash, debris, limbs, everything, everywhere, and we're still not addressing the problem. I certainly appreciate Mr. Jones for getting out there, he and his crew for cutting every day. But I don't feel like a lot of the cutting that he's doing is the city's responsibility. I feel like that at some point, we are going to have to get together and come up with a solution to solve our problem. Because like I say, at the end of the day, we still have a problem. When December comes or November, when things cool off and everybody's cut their grass for the last time, we're still going to have a problem, because it's coming back. I don't feel like we are addressing the problem. I mean, I feel like it's somebody's responsibility, it's ours. I feel like maybe with code enforcement, I don't know if we don't have enough people to go around. Do we need to hire more? Is there more training that we need? Something needs to happen. We've got to do something. I mean, we're just, as the book, yes, like I say, and I agree with you, it's raining and the grass is growing faster. But what about the spots that are just there and nobody's cutting? I mean, I mean, I mean, the houses that are just there and nobody's turning them down. are just there and nobody's cutting them? I mean, I mean, I mean, the houses that are just there and nobody's turning them down.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Code enforcement, Gant. I understand the problem and the issues. But I have sent out twenty seven certified letters to people about abandoned houses and overgrown lots. I have six more certified letters on my desk to send off as soon as I get some more postage. But once these citizens receive these letters, they have thirty days. And um I believe we are going about it all wrong because there's a property standards board. Once those thirty days is up, we have to go before the property standard board and the code officers have to do an affidavit to send these people to court and the judge have the last say so and uh from that point, when the judge, you know, have them to do their property, they might ask them, sir or ma'am, how long do you need to take care of your property? They might say six months. They might say i- i- if if we can't get them to do it within thirty days, then we go to the property standard board. And then the city have to furnish a lawyer for each citizen that then receive a certified letter about their property. Like I say, I've been sending out certified letters. I've been sending out postcards. I even been uh receiving citizens' complaints about different stuff. Um I have met with people. Uh some of them is is taking care of their problems and some of them not. But majority of uh property that people are taking care of is real scary because is might be on this side of the South Helen and might be on the other side of North Helen. I I can't speak for West Helen. I only can speak for Helen. I was assigned to Helen's side.
You're assigned to Helen and what, Mr. uh Williams is assigned to West Helen?
Yes, ma'am.
If if I may. He 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 brought up the issue of the property standards board and, you know, through the email traffic that I asked Ms. Ramsey to send me a copy of that ordinance.
Yes, I looked over today.
Yeah, it what the thing that he mentioned, the reason why I asked it uh for a copy of the ordinance. And and what I'm gonna suggest is that every council member uh take a look at it. What I would, and I'll let the city attorney speak speak more broadly to these issues, but in two thousand fifteen, we created the Property Standards Board. And we did it because we had a number of people, citizens, who longed for a day when there was a property standards board because they thought things worked better that way. And, you know, I've been on the council since consolidation and there's always a lot of people who want to do things the way that they used to do it ten or fifteen years ago, but twenty years ago. And what I would say after I really, really took a look at it is we created a problem where none existed. Uh when we consolidated, we had a process by which code enforcement could come in and notify the property owners, get that to the council. We could uh address it by ordinance and have property condemned. And what our current structure creates is a process that is so long and arduous, it is it's it's not even working. And uh um I think that we should go back to the system that we had. And and I've I've taken a look at it. I've talked to the city attorney about it. I'll let him kind of more in in detail address to you what we all the things that we did wrong. And how we can, how we can better address this process. Because what we've done is we've just created just a an absolute maze of 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 paperwork and process that makes it impossible to get to the end and get uh get some of this property condemned and and demolished. And so with that, um I have a copy of it. Uh Ms. Ramsey emailed me a copy of it. And I know Ms. Davis asked for a copy of it. She let me know that she wanted a copy and I don't know if she sent you one. If she didn't, I can send it to if anybody else wants one. I want you, you know, I would encourage everyone to take a look at it. And so you'll get an understanding of why it needs to go. Um but uh that was back in two thousand fifteen and and uh city attorney, you can you can you can address it from here.
Okay. Uh thank you, Mr. Andre Valley for the record. In May of two thousand fifteen, this this body uh through uh the former members uh adopted the the property standards ordinance uh and the property standards ordinance. What it did was it was an umbrella that it was an umbrella that they uh thought that they would cover every bit of information, every ordinance that we have for regulatory matters. So the property standards ordinance covered the grass cutting. It covers condemnation of buildings. It covers in literally every other ordinance we had. They they repealed them all and placed them in one process. Well, there was a property standards board that was that was created. Now, to deal with this property issue, you have two different trainings. You can go a criminal route and you also can go a s- a civil route. The criminal route, Mr. Gant spoke about is the the code enforcement officers can do an affidavit uh about the grass, can do affidavit about the uh the structures and have them come to misdemeanor court before the Honorable Judge David King. And and then he determines what their penalty is and whether they clean it up and et cetera. Uh they uh the ordinance kept in place that you have to send them notice beforehand and tell them they have they need to clean their property. But after the process, you determine whether you're going to criminal route or the civil route. Now, this repealed all our other ordinances, so you have this ordinance that covers it all. And on this ordinance, let me give you some of the high points of ordinance. After they send, if we're going the civil route, after they send the letter, then they have to do an affidavit to the property standards board. The property standards board, if if an affidavit, they say, we were unable to find Andre Valley or Andre Valley Flatfoot refused to accept service. That this ordinance says that the city is supposed to point an attorney at Lightham for their person. So the city would require to pay for an attorney to defend the per- person's property. Now, as a practical matter, you have this, you would have the code enforcement, the mayor's office and the city attorney trying to get the property torn now. But the city and this ordinance saying we'll pay for all absentee owners and all people who refuse to comply for an attorney for themselves to defend themselves in a due process. And so the property standards board is is supposed to be able to subpoena witnesses and bring people in. And it's so the witnesses and bringing people in, they would have a hearing, but they can't make the final solution. All they are is a middle person. And then they send it to the city council who, in according to this ordinance, the property standards chairman would speak for ten minutes. And then every other witness would speak for ten minutes to have a full blown hearing if the person still didn't comply. And they asked the city council would have various options. Of noting this ordinance also, what it says is that tearing down the property is the least favorable option. It gives a list of other options beforehand. It specifically points out that that it is the least favorable option to tear down the property. I believe that this ordinance was a was ordinance that was adopted from a larger municipality. And it it wasn't designed to fit a small municipality, uh but it gives all of these requirements. And so uh the decision was made that what they would do was do affidavits. And there still was a Ms. Ms. Helen Havitt, uh she's been uh the chief of staff on the Mayor Halliwell and a sounder chief of staff on the Mayor Smith. She had a she compiled a list of properties that we had already condemned under the old ordinance. And to begin to uh for the condemnation, not the condemnation process, but the demolition process on those. Well, one of the issues you all remember back in two thousand fifteen, sixteen, you wanted a track hole or back hole. You didn't have the equipment. And once you purchased equipment for the landfill, uh since then, there's just been those little issues of having the equipment. There still is a backlog of uh condemned properties that have not been uh demolished at this point. Uh Mr. Jones aware of some of those. I think that Mayor Smith is aware of it. If not, then Ms. Helen Havitt is aware of them because she had a a list of those that were done by ordinance and would be torn down. Now, uh those are the issues that we have. There's still a lot of inventory for us. If you've noticed in the past two or three years, you the past two years, you haven't had a condemnation or it come for you. You've been working off the old list. Uh but part of it is all of the things that happened because once we passed the regulation, we have to follow it. And so once we get before the property standards board, the city had to hire every person that come before that 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 didn't comply or refused to comply, an attorney to defend the call the vaccine. And we've had to pay that person. And not only have to pay that person, we go through the process of having to have a hearing before the property standards board. Then thereafter, that's not the final hearing. As I stated earlier, you come before the city council. The city council will have a full hearing. And so it it created a convoluted process to something that would rather simple and straightforward. Now, one of the things I want to tell you all also is when we're emailing each other on the city business, we must include the press. So make sure that we're emailing each other that we copy the most the 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 whole world. We copy also the KJW. They're on our permanent list for notification for matters of communication between each other. Uh any communication included email would be a part of the Freedom of Information Act. So I just want to remind you, you all discussed emailing this ordinance earlier. And so I want to remind you of that when we when we communicate between amongst each other uh that we should also notify, uh just copy the press or whatever you communicate between each other relating to city business because that technically is a meeting. Uh but going back to it, I I think that that we need to streamline it and go forward. But one of the issues that we have is 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 the problem gets larger every year. Uh I hear the frustration of everybody. I hear Ms. Davis in particular because she has been quite adamant and been an advocate for all these properties as well as all of you. Uh one of the issues that we have to do is make sure that Mr. Jones has all the equipment and the personnel to begin to eradicate those that you already have condemned. Uh and I think that has been a large issue from from the get go is whether he has both the equipment and the personnel to to do the job. And that may take a substantial investment to do it. Uh now, as it relates to entering on so much property, people still have rights and they still have customers' rights because they have property. Uh we can't go and take their property. Uh now, there are some nuisance things that Chief and I have been discussing about what high crime areas, what people what people are doing uh a lot of crime, so many violent crimes within a year, then we can go in and do that. But when we do that, the city has to maintain it, lock it down and 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 keep it together. Also, in this in this property standards ordinance, it requires us, if we go in and we put the sign we're supposed to be, the cure to be uh this property status order requires the city to go ahead and board the building up to make sure it's not done. It also provides fines for people trying to rent properties in the appetited state. Uh but there's a lot to it. I I I would ask that you review it. There's things in it. I'm not saying this ordinance is bad. There are a lot of good things in it. Uh the process is arduous, though, and it creates a a a lot more process than than we need locally. I think uh before this ordinance passed, you used to do condemnation, the startup code enforcement officer, then we're straight to the council. Uh but now you have this this disportion in between and it makes it more complex and it makes it more expensive. Now, as I talked about about the chief and I, when the chief and I met, uh there are some properties around town that that uh the state law says that we can declare public nuisances for high crime and the city would take over those properties. We'd have to file a a civil lawsuit in Circuit Court about that. Uh there are some that have in mind that we will be working on, uh but uh that's not addressing this this ordinance. Uh I've said a lot. I will yield to anyone who has any questions uh uh or comments or statements.
And and I'm just gonna open it up. I'll just say real quickly, I very much appreciate this conversation. I really do. I'll just leave it there, but uh I do think that maybe it provides appreciation for how complex we have made it. And I agree with Mr. Ethely and I hope we could find a simpler, straighter way to do it. I would direct your attention to one thing as a side note, just kind of a side note, but it's directly related. And it's related to this mask issue as well in a way. The uh if you're reading, if you take the Democrat Gazette, there's an article in the paper today about the Pine Love City Council deter- deciding whether or not to hire a collection agency to collect fines in District Court in Pine Love. And when I became mayor, the former mayor of Little Rock, Mark Stotler, told me that at the time he became mayor, which things were a little different, but maybe, but he had he had the ticket book that was not collected, the fine book. And he hired a collection agency and they he was bragging on what a great job they did and how much revenue it brought into the city. And they turned that around, used it for good use and and recommended that I do that. Uh for whatever reason, District Court decided not to turn it over to collection agency, but it is in the city council. If you should show so choose to do that as Phil's as the uh sorry, uh Pine Love City Council is is looking into it. I think that's an option because just like Mr. Gant said and and everybody else here said, at the end of the day, if you if you're not going to have to pay a fine or pay a penalty or or have suffering consequences, it's very difficult to for us to bring any accountability to this issue. And all of us as elected officials feel accountable to our constituents and we should because it is a huge issue. I mean, we knocked down a brick duplex on Ohio Street today. We were talking about. We we are knocking them down and that list needs to be updated and we're trying to update it because we have knocked down a bunch of them. But my God, there are hundreds and hundreds and hundreds left. Um and it's such a slow process as everyone here has pointed out. And at the end of the day, especially on the the lots, the mask um thing that the governor's doing with the fines, uh will they actually pay them? What what will we do if they don't pay them? If we're not going to collect them. So I mean, that's a big issue. At the end of the day, where does it end up? And it ends up uh so.
Great. See, it got to be put.
City Attorney and I had a good conversation earlier today and and he he informed me about the federal lawsuit from years ago and so forth and so on. Um which most people, I certainly didn't know about it. But I would urge you to consider the collection idea and I'll be quiet there. But I do appreciate the conversation, open it back up to conversation just.
Mayor, I guess I'm agreeing with uh everyone else that said, but uh it is becoming overwhelming. And there are so many for so long. And but we we need to streamline this process if we can so that we can move a little bit more expeditiously. And Mr. Jones, they've they've done a a really, really good job. I've been in on the conversations about the Ohio Street uh projects because I've been in people's ears for almost five years on some of those uh buildings on Ohio Street. And I think right now that's uh it's made it impact because what he said about five or six have been completed uh so far. But it it's taken a while. I know it's taken uh five years on some of those properties to get them down. And I'm so happy that uh they're coming down and property owners are going to have to be held accountable for uh for their properties. And, you know, uh we need to streamline that process and.
Mr. Ethely, do you have any, my question to you is, what are the next steps? Because I would love to see a stream on this and do what you said basically.
Well, I I after I reviewed the ordinance, I have I have some, I guess, some legal questions or issues that I like to take up with the city attorney about how we can quickly um move in a different direction. So what I would like to do is, first things, I like to put this on the next agenda uh so that we can take it up. And this this um this ordinance did encompass a lot of things, so we may have to piece this back together. But we may we may not. Uh I I think there's some issues that may may um allow us to do this in a in a in a quicker fashion. Uh but I'm going to talk with the city attorney about it between now and the next meeting. And uh what I would suggest is that we uh move on either repealing or mending, doing something with what we have. I can only tell you, I I would hope that if I look back at the record, it would reflect that I did not support this ordinance. But if it does, then it is, it was a mistake. It was absolutely a mistake. I'm not afraid to tell you. It was it is awful. And uh I remember the climate of the day was that people wanted to be involved. We had citizens who, when we used to have a property standards board and we used to do this and they did great things and and it sounded good as they came and presented to the council, but as a practice, it's it's awful. And uh we we had a better process, we had a better process after after consolidation. And I think we need to get back to that because it it helps us to move to move along a lot faster. And uh a a lesson going forward is that when we consolidated, the municipal league came down and helped us put together that new code of ordinances. And and those things have been studied and and placed in operation in different municipalities across the state of Arkansas. And there's some things that we don't have to reinvent because they've been invented for us. And uh we don't have to go back to twenty or thirty years ago because some of those processes just don't work anymore today. And so uh but I I think there's a way that we can do this and I I'll talk with the city attorney about it because I noticed some things and some legal issues. And I think there may be a way for us to cut across the field and get this done. But I would certainly like to do it so we can get to demolition a lot quicker. some legal issues, and I think there may be a way for us to cut across the field and get this done, but I would certainly like to do it, so we can get to demolition a lot quicker.
And I, I would add, um, you know, the state has something called Code Revision Commission, where they take all the laws passed after, after every session, uh, work in context of the entire code and update it. And as I've tried to review our code here, and I urge Mr. Ethely and Mr. Valley and others to give some consideration to the creation of a code revision commission for the city. Because as I read them, there are many that are West Helen ordinances, it still just say West Helena, there are some that reference before the change in the, uh, the wards that was made electorally a couple of years ago. Um, they just don't, they don't make a cohesive sense. And the reason is because nobody's done that after every two years or so to keep the code book, uh, sensible. So that's something, and this is an area where that is the case, uh, when this was passed, thing different, and it reads like an outdated piece of board legislation or ordinance. Anyway, um, anything else on that? Have we, is, anything else on, on the overtime fire police issue, we kind of addressed that earlier? Flooding issues was on the list, flooding issues, anybody want to discuss flooding issues?
Yes, uh, that was the issue that I had. Uh, I, I've been on the councils for a while, and I've stressed that these ditches are not being dug out. And that's some of the issue that we're having. Uh, I know that, you know, with the rain and everything, everybody's talking about the rain, 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 but the problem that we have, even, even if you, the pavement that you talked about earlier, uh, on Oakland Street and all those, where the state highway, where the state has paved those highways. Well, we, the, the former mayor Hollowell, in his administration, we paved, the council paved streets, and the same thing I said to him, I'm gonna say to you, we have these issues with these ditches not being dug out. That's why the water is staying in the streets. When we get a heavy rain, the water flushes the trash back into the street. When, when we get, when are we gonna have someone to come in, or the water department, or even on downtime, we get these ditches dug out, and that'll help with some of the flood. Uh, on Anderson Street, those ditches, not, not the ones that the state owns, but the ones on St. Jean and all those places, those ditches keep, you know, they, they, they don't even, water can't even flow through because they're so packed out with grass. So, we need to try to do something about these ditches that are not being dug out. You know, even when people cut their grass, they throw the grass in the ditch, that's not doing anything but building the ditch up. But at some point, you know, we, 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 we did a water increase, we did a sewer increase, a sanitation increase. At some point, we gotta give the citizens something, and I'm looking at these ditches, you know, all over on James Street, those digits, I, I mean, you know, and with the city, you know, I understand we're talking about other people's property, but Mayor, you look at our property. I mean, you know, that's something, I look, look, look at our property, look how we treat our property, so how can we ask the citizens to take care of their property when our property looks horrible? And as, and as a CEO of the city, you, you ride, you ride through the town. We should, we have to be the, the prime example of taking care of our property. It took, in. Helen, these limbs are still in the parks, you, you, you look at, or treat their property, right? Look, look at how the sanitation department is swamped, trying to get these limbs up, but all this stuff goes to Helen Park. I know what, due to the COVID, that people can't use the parks and stuff like that, but we have to take care of our property, so people can start, so we can hold other people accountable. I would wish I'd hold these people accountable for not taking care of their property, but we take care of ours.
Hey, Mr. Franklin, can I cut in for a minute, please, sir?
Yeah, yes, sir, always.
All right, well, the, the park is clear now. Now, the ditches, if you can recall, the ditches over there on Allison Street, I think you can recall that last year when I took over the street department, that area was the first area, and you came over there and watched me do it. That was the first area I started cleaning up.
Right, right, but that's not, but that, but Mr. Jones, now, hold on, wait, 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 hold on, Mr. Jones, hold on, let me tell you this. That's not all, I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not blaming, it's, it's always, see, this is the thing, when Oscar was here, we, I mean, you, one, one person, and I'm not playing, I'm not trying to bash you, but you need to, hold on, wait. You need some help, it's clear that you need some help. It, hold on, it's clear that you need some help, and I'm not bashing you, I'm just telling you the truth. The mayor knows it, we all know it, that you need some help. When there was, you took over two departments, you got two departments, you got street and sanitation, you need some help, everybody needs some help. The mayor needs some help as well, the council needs a mayor, we all need some help to try to fix it, but I, I, I'm, I'm telling you this, the mayor sees it as well as I see it, but how can we get on to people about their property, we not taking care of? I mean, you know, the mayor has a day-to-day operations, I'm just saying, when we start taking care of our property, I, I took some pictures today to send the mayor about how our property looks. So we, we have to hold ourselves to the same standards, and we asking, uh, the code enforcement to hold to the, 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 these lot, these lot owners. That's the, that's the same thing, I mean, that's all I'm saying, and with the flooding issue on James Street, Mayor, I, Ms. Ms. Kimberly Norton reached out to me about the, the drainage, how the water backed up into her house. And I'm thinking that somebody needs, you know, we need to check on it, I mean, we need to see how people are being treated.
Yeah, again, Mr. Franklin, I checked on that today, me, Ro Mac, Willie Starter, and Nicole enforcement.
Yes, sir.
What's going on back there, the farmer's built a, a big levee in her backyard, and you got a little small ditch back there. Once that ditch, once that ditch, and I told Ms. Kim this, uh, last year, once that ditch filled up, Mr. Franklin, all the water pushed to her front of her house and flooded the yard. I mean, it, it ain't got nothing, her, her city ditches in the front, which we took pictures, is completely clear.
Okay.
Pictures and, and sent them to the code enforcement and mayor, but those, those ditches is completely clear.
So, okay, with that, can you tell me about this one off, uh, in front, hey, Mr. Ethely, it's over, across the street from where you stay, on Clearview, I think it's Clear, if it's not Clearview, over there, but over by, uh, Larry Street, back behind it, where, where Pat Kelly crushed the, the sewer line, where the water can't go through, the sewer water, none of that can go through, have y'all looked at that as well, because it's flooded back into people's houses as well?
And that ain't no ditch back there, that's something that he made a trench, that's considered to be private property.
Yeah, but, but he, but he messed up our, he messed up the stuff our customers who pay sewer, their sewer not going through.
He took, he, he pulled, he, he put a drain back there, and that drain, like, once it, upon the road, once you drive over somebody, it ended up crushing the drain, and that's what. No, he, he hadn't done it yet, but you know, you gonna, that, that's something Nicole enforcement gonna have to take up.
Not, not, what, what, the, the mayor, have you reached out to Mr. Kelly about that, because those people are back there are still.
I have reached out to him, Cole enforcement reached out to him in the past, and the mayor had reached out to him.
Okay, so.
It gets back to the complexity that, uh, Mr. Ethely was talking about, and the paying fines, accountability, uh, issues as well. There's also a fence line, let's see that ditch, we have some ditches with some overgrown brush. That Westwood area is, um, it's, it's, you know, the thing about ditches is they're all obviously related, connected. That one, it's the weakest, it's only one of the weakest link. But, but that, the short answer is, yeah, we did that, we started doing that a year ago. We're still trying to get it, and, and we're gonna get it done eventually, I'm determined to do it, but it would sure be easier if the council could follow Mr. Ethely's lead, streamline this process, and even importantly, build some credibility in the punishment phase of this. If you think you're gonna have to pay this fine, you're more likely to take care of it. If you think nobody's ever gonna make you, be held you accountable, then you're gonna kick the can down the road and never do it, and that's what we've been doing in this city for a long time.
Exactly.
Okay, I got this, Mr. Mayor, with, with Mr. with Mr. Pat Kelly, we need to, we need to file lawsuits against him, we need to sue, we need to sue him to get that drainage issue fixed, that's not on us. So, can, 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 what, can you handle that? Because.
That's an Andre Valley question.
What, Mr.?
Let's go with Franklin.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mr. Val, with that happening, with that sewer line down there, uh, uh, Clearview across from Larry Street, that's what it is, can you, uh, reach out and send Mr. Kelly, uh, something that we, a, 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 a letter intent to sue, if I'm correct with that? Because we shouldn't have to pay for something, because he does, that's his property, but to mess up, where, where we have the sewer line running, he damaged our sewer line, he should pay for that.
Okay, I'll get the, I'll be with the mayor about the information and send him a letter related to that, and then we can go try to uh, take further action if, if necessary.
Yes, yes, sir.
Can, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Before we get away from that issue, this, I, I remember this coming up, I, I addressed it at a council meeting several months ago, because I, I got some calls about that area flooding, and we talked about it. But I'm not sure I truly understand what the issue is, can we have somebody, uh, with the city maybe put together some information for us in terms of, uh, of, of pictures and identify what has happened and what needs to be done to repair, so we'll have a complete picture of where we are and what we need to do to get it fixed? If you understand what I'm saying, can we have an assessment made by some city department to determine what needs to happen?
Yes, sir, Mr. Ethely, we can get that done for you.
We kind of did that a year ago, we just need to put it on paper for you.
Yes, sir, and that way we can understand the full picture of what has happened and what we need to do to get it remedied.
Right, that's, that's what the, that's the city sewer line, right?
Yes, sir.
It's, it's a drainage ditch.
But he crushed it, he crushed the sewer line, though, Mayor.
It's also, it's also a drainage ditch that was crushed around the traffic going over. And there's also a fence line, and mostly it's a drainage issue. Um, there's a drainage ditch that goes through Westwood that starts out, uh, to the east and goes all the way across forty-nine over to. Yeah, a big ditch, and we, Bobby and I went out there and, uh, when it was flooding, not when it was dry, so we could see it, with the landowners and, uh, everybody else, several others. And, and we walked it back from forty-nine all the way back to the source of the problem. There are three or four choke points, uh, and the Kelly property is, I don't know if I should say that publicly, but the property that I know of as being that property was one of them, but not the only one. There are several choke points along that way, along that route. And that, that ultimately, and, and not, not only that, you have a residential area that was built in a very low area, and you have farmland behind it. In that case, the farmer has tried to alleviate the problem, but, you know, at the same time, they, that's, they're part of it. They have to be reminded to do their part, and they do usually, but in that case. But it's a multi, it's, it's a long ditch, runs around, and it's got several choke points. At one place, there is a fence line, literally acts as a dam, crossing into the ditch. We had a lot of flash flood, you know, we had the flash flood, where you have, one of the worst flash floods we've had in years, I'm told. Uh, under any circumstances, that sort of, but even in the best circumstances, that would have been bad. People only see what's in front of them. The Helen Improvement District owns some drainage areas, these are the city, they have almost no money. They're, they're very overgrown, and it would be good, and it causes problems for both the city and the residents along those routes. Not to mention it's ugly, and we can't get prisoners right now because of COVID. Um, but it would be good to enter into a, into government agreement with them, the county, and anybody else who could help to go through there and just clean out all that Helen Improvement District drainage ditch areas. Because our debt is back up to it, the residents is back up to it, it's all linked, and it's all a mess.
Miss Moore, and, and I agree with you, but Mr. Mayor, we, we shouldn't do it, I mean, this is what I, I want to say. Helen Improvement District hires a guy to do that, and he came to the city, that's Frank Clancy. You know who it is, and I know who it is, he came, that's his responsibility, because when they have, had Mr. Elsie Adams doing it, he did all the drainage issues, so Helen Improvement District needs, we, we need to talk to them, oh, and tell them what they, what they're responsible for doing, because we shouldn't have to do, get our people, contract somebody to go do their job, when that's what people over the Helen, the, the, the Helen Improvement District, Mr. St. Columbus, you can help me with that. They pay taxes for, in the Helen, in that district, to have that stuff cleaned up. They pay Mr. Clancy fifty-five thousand dollars a year to do that job, and somebody needs to hold him accountable to do that job. So, now, my, my, my thing is, what are we gonna do about these ditches? Because that, I mean, are we gonna try to get some equipment, or are you gonna try to get us an update on how we gonna get these ditches cleaned? So we'll have this water standing in the street, and, and standing on these folks' property, or flood their property, we need to work on that. We, and, and that, and it's random, if you will, next meeting, put Frank Clancy down, so he can come to the meeting and explain to us what, I mean, why Helen, well, why is it, why is it looking like that in the ditches? I've got pictures of all of the Helen Improvement District's, uh, administration alley, all back there. It's horrible, grass has grown up through the sewer lines and everything, Elsie Adams did it, miss, excuse me, Mr. Elsie Adams did it. So, and, and there was three people there, there's one person there, and Mr. Clancy has the resource to contract stuff out. So, Mr. St. Columbus, you on the line, what else, I mean, Helen Improvement District should have those funds to take care of that. And, Mr. Mayor, if you will, can somebody, can you also let us know about what we gonna do about these ditches? So we get these ditches clean, and I understand this, there's another ordinance on the books. That when these, when they're supposed to make these street cuts, they're supposed to go back with, uh, asphalt, not concrete. Like when, when these folks come making these street cuts for the gas lines, stuff like that, they need to replace, place that with asphalt, not concrete.
Yeah, I, I got another question, Mr. Franklin.
Is that Bobby?
Yes, sir, now, you had mentioned something about the city ditches, Mr. Franklin?
Right.
Now, keep in mind, we got thirteen employees working out in the street, thirteen. We cutting some days, some days we're doing potholes, some days we, 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 we cleaning ditches. I mean, we, we can't get it all out here full-fledged, and then I'm, I mean, I'm sorry, Mr. Franklin, I'm doing all I can to try to beautify this city, you know, but again, you can't do much done, and you, you act, not even, I get out here myself and work.
But, but, Mr. Jones.
Hold on, Mr. Franklin, but with thirteen people, how much can you, you think about that now? I get out here and I get on a tractor myself, I get out and I get in a, in a ditch myself and cut. Now, you mentioned something about the ditch, and you finna call out a name earlier. Now, when I first took over the street department, I can't, you was the first one I came and got. And you, you, and I ain't gonna, I'm not trying to bash nobody, and I actually pulled a cub off of a ditch and let you look in inside of it, you, you called it.
I was with you.
And I dug those ditches out, so I didn't hurt a whole lot of, of, of problems, man. When I first come here, I mean, I'm not gonna say Oscar didn't do his job, but he couldn't get it all either, Mr. Franklin.
And, and, and that's why, that's why I'm saying, the mayor, this is, this is an ongoing problem, it's not to bash you, the mayor knows.
I know that, I, I know that. I heard you, let me finish, you still gonna get fined some ditches that ain't got no, eh, 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 no attention been placed on some of these ditches. You still gonna have that, Mr. Franklin, because like I say, if a lot, I, I advertise it a lot, I, I tell the mayor to, uh, put it on Facebook. If it's some spots we haven't got, tell, I mean, if they call up, I'm gonna go right to it. If it's brought to my attention, I think all the council members know that, if you bring to Bobby Jones' attention, I'm gonna jump right on, if I can fix it.
But guess what, Mr. Jones, guess what, you're the, you're the one person, that's, that's what I'm saying.
That's true, that's true.
Hold on, wait, wait, I let you talk, I let you talk.
Let me, let me interrupt to say, because we, we do have a couple of things, I don't know who I asked. Let, let me say two things, first of all, this is, and I say this as a citizen, not as an elected official, it has been like this a long time. You could have, have the National Guard come in here, the National Guard come in here with all the air battleships and trucks and anything else, maybe equipment. You couldn't do this in one summer.
No, sir.
Because it's been neglected for at least twenty years or more. You cannot undo twenty ye- now, lis- listen to me. You cannot undo twenty years of neglect in, in a summer or two. I don't care how much money you have. You can't. It's impossible. Now, you can do it, but you can't do it in a year. Now, money is not the only solution. People, not the only solution. The solution is to get ahead of where it is and try not to let it go backwards while you're trying to go forwards. We're going forwards. Mr. Jones has done a remarkable job. And I will back away from that for a minute. Do these have, listen, I hear from the same constituents you do. And I agree with you. That's one of the reasons I ran for office. I fully agree with you. And could we do more? I'm sure we could. Or is there room for criticism? I'm absolutely positive there is. But I can tell you that Bobby Jones and the Street Sanitation Department are doing their absolute level best and they've been working on the sun down. But you cannot undo twenty years. Don't expect it to be done undone in twenty years. It's not gonna happen. It takes, it takes certain years and do. Now, have we done, have we dug ditches? Absolutely, we've done ditches. We've done, dug a lot of ditches. Have we cleaned out ditches? We clean them out constantly. Is it possible to undo all the blight that's been allowed to dig bigger, build up over the years? Absolutely not possible. So if you want to find room for criticism, and that's what you want, then you can find it. I guarantee you. But if you, you can also find room for improvement. And we've had a lot of dramatic improvement. And the citizens do notice, uh, in the areas where it's being done. But we have an area of something like thirteen to fifteen square miles. And it's, it's a lot of area to cover. We're getting there. We're making progress. And I'm proud of it. So I'm not gonna back off of it for a minute. All right. I wanna, I wanna cover the wearing mask. It's something y'all, I thought it should be congratulated on last week. And as you know, Governor on Friday came out with a, a, uh, executive order that mandated the wearing of masks, uh, across the state and encourages, asks local governments to enforce that mandate. The, the biggest difference between what we passed two weeks ago and what the governor did was to give us
Mr. Mayor.
Excuse me, just to say, uh, on, uh, warning, a fine of up to five hundred dollars from one hundred to five hundred, unless they stay six feet apart. So if somebody has a problem wearing a mask, they have to maintain a distance of six feet. This has worked all over the world. There are multiple studies. We are, I'm just, I think you already know, but I'm just making sure you know, uh, enforcing the governor's mandate. Mr. Edley said, I think, when we did the ordinance, that he wished he could have done more. And I agreed with him. And at that time, we couldn't do more, but now we can. And, uh, I would ask for your support and help and continue to educate people. Uh, we had a briefing at the police department yesterday about the governor's mandate, what it means, how to enforce it. And the long and the short of it is this, um, you can have exceptions. But the goal is if you can't stay six feet apart or you can't maintain that, which means if you're, if you're walking on the track, wear your mask with you because somebody else might come on the track who doesn't respect that six feet. So you're gonna need to put a mask on. They're all supposed to have a mask on if they get near you. Otherwise, you can be fine without a mask as long as you're over six feet away. Um, it's really pretty simple and people are making it very difficult. So I just want to make sure you're aware that they've been briefed. This week is mostly warnings. As y'all are probably aware, several of our businesses are now posing mandatory mask requirements. Uh, across the river in Oklahoma County, Mississippi, they've seen a post-July fourth spike in coronavirus cases. I think we'll, hopefully I can, I'll be able to confirm this with people that are smarter than me, uh, which is not hard to do. But on Friday at our, our COVID task force meeting, but, but even though we've seen an increase, we haven't seen a July fourth spike. One of the reasons is because we tried our best to vigilantly enforce that. And it wasn't successful all the time, but we, we took, we did our best and they weren't even trying in other places. And now they're paying for it. And there are over four hundred semi-positive cases in Combe County right now. So we are literally surrounded, um, except for maybe DeChey County to the south. And they don't have a bridge crossing. They're sparsely populated, as is Monroe County. But otherwise, we, we have had increases, um, but not dramatic spikes. The masks are supposed to help, as you already know, prevent those kinds of alarming spikes that would overwhelm our public health system. But we're gonna have to be strong and show, continue to show that leadership because a lot of people don't want to do it. And I understand, I don't want to do it. I don't like wearing them. Uh, but I wear it because I have to, because it helps the community, keeps us from, it keeps the community safe. If we all wear it, it's, it protects the other person. So, I want, and I'm sorry, what I was headed with that is y'all had asked me to go back and report to you tonight on the ability to buy some masks to, uh, have fire department or police department, uh, events where we, where we give them out. And I've been able to, so far, um, a group called the Holland and Ware Charitable Foundation, which is a favorite foundation of the American Queen Steamlines. It has a special affinity for Helen and, uh, twenty-five hundred dollars. Uh, the Helen Health Foundation has agreed to donate twelve hundred and fifty dollars. So we've raised approximately thirty-seven fifty. And, and I've also gotten estimates from about four or five, if not more, vendors on masks. So I would ask your guidance on how we should go forward with the money that we're raising in terms of, uh, purchasing, distribution. Obviously, we don't have enough money to give everyone, anyone with a child a mask. But we did make it a mandate and we did pass ordinance and y'all did indicate and I agreed with you that we should try our best to do that. So that's my report. Um, I've been able to raise thirty-seven fifty. Another twelve fifty from the council would make it an even five thousand, I think, if my math, if my math is right. But, uh, I'm just asking for your input and guidance on how you'd like me to proceed on that.
I mean, I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm all in support of that. I think that, uh, we want to make sure that, um, we can help people to comply with the mask requirement, not because, uh, we just want to be, um, charitable, but it is, it's so, so needed. And, uh, you know, since I have the microphone, uh, Mr. Mayor, let me say, there's so much mis- misinformation going around about masks, how they work and how they protect each other. Uh, I've seen people saying stuff like, uh, you can wear one if you want to, if you're afraid, but I won't, if I don't, if I'm, I don't have to, don't worry about me, I'll take care of myself. And, and that is a total misunderstanding of how masks work. To be safe, you need the person who's infected to wear the mask. And if you're not wearing one and don't know whether you're infected, you're the danger. It's not the person with the mask, it's the person without the mask who's the danger. And so, um, uh, just, just because people will listen to this meeting, I want people to know that uh, i- it's important that everyone understands how this virus is transmitted and what they can do to protect themselves and others. And so I am in support of that.
Thank you, Mr. Edley. Does, do y'all have any input on how you want me to go forward with the funding? We also, we also need to make sure, of course, we have masks for our city employees. And we do have masks, uh, but I do worry about fall and I kinda want to make sure we have stockpiles.
My question, my thing is.
Your input on that.
If, if you can. If we got somebody locals, spend that money locally, if, if Walmart or some, uh, janitorial service here uh, would, would have some, see who's the cheapest and go with that.
So, just maybe get estimates from, um, I've got some, some estimates really, but get official, formal estimates for everybody and try to get, and I know we want to make sure the masks, credible masks are some out there that are kind of shysters and we want to make sure they're not shysters legitimate and all that. But once we can make sure, verify that, just get some estimates and get as many masks as we want, is that, we have some people that make cloth masks locally. And then we have the disposable masks, the surgical masks, there's all kinds of masks. So I'm just asking for your input before we do anything. Okay, well, if you, if you, if you think of anything later, feel free to call me or email me or text me or or anything else like that. But we, uh, we'll try to go ahead and move forward with that. All right. I'm trying to see if there's anything we haven't covered. Hiring and job, uh, these revenue loss are the last things. And then anybody want to address those?
I know some issues I had with that, with, have we had any new, new employees, any new employees?
I'm sorry, uh, Chris, you're, Mr. Franklin, you're breaking up on us. I don't know if you realize that.
Uh, I, I don't, but can you hear me better now?
I, I heard that.
Well, uh, I like to finish a statement. You had come me out. And you, uh, it goes back to the ditches and I'm done with it. But just like Mr. Joe, you said Mr. Jones is doing a good job. He is doing a good job. But you can also ask Mr. Jones, I can get out here and I could, and I, uh, do whatever I need to do to help the city as well. And I don't charge anybody a dime. So I, I, I work as well. I'm a silent partner that's working. I don't answer now. It's back to these, uh, have we hired any new employees without this, this month to the jail? So are we ready for that? I mean, how are we, how are we looking due to finances for next month due to the loss that we gonna see? Because of the new jail.
I did hear that part. Mr. Turner, you wanna, can you address that part?
We had already, like I stated earlier, that the city council had already taken into account when they passed a budget out, I would have projected about two hundred and fifty thousand dollar loss uh, for this year, uh, for the last six months of the year. And so they've already made prep, you know, taken into account the loss when they made the budget. And we have to do this really, uh, next year's budget when we experience more of a five hundred thousand dollar loss. But the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar loss that I projected for the six months, the last six months, last six months of this year, they've already addressed it in the budget. Now, we won't start losing that money until next month.
Um, Ms., and Mrs. Turner, he was asking about next month, I think. What are our projections for next month?
I'm thinking about, um, I'm, I'm, I mean, I'm thinking about forty-five, fifty thousand dollars maybe, uh, difference in, uh, income. I mean, that's our, our listeners guess. Like I said, the, 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 that, that loss has already been taken into account when they passed the budget.
So, so in other words, we'd already assumed, um, we've already seen the, uh, loss, I mean, we've seen it coming for a long time. And we've built that into the budget and the revenue and the cuts and all the rest of it that we did when we passed the budget. So we're not anticipating.
I'm thinking about, I think I had averaged about thirty thousand dollars maybe a month. Somewhere in that neighborhood, thirty, thirty-five thousand.
And, and I, my, this is Chris Franklin again. I mean, I don't understand what you're all saying, but we don't, we don't, we didn't know how much we'll be hit with until it happens. Now, the, now, next one, next month will be the first month that we will receive the revenue. So we'll know next month, or we should, yeah, we'll know in September, how we're looking, right? Because we still don't know the number. We guessed, we guessed, we guessed maybe seven hundred thousand, then we worked it down to two hundred and fifty thousand. So we, we, we started guessing, so we won't know until September, how we'll, how we'll get affected, right?
Yeah, I mean, like I said, the, the, the estimate is about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this year because we, you know, we got revenues for the first six months. Projected about five hundred thousand and in the neighborhood of five hundred thousand dollars a year. And so, you know, since it's only six months, I'm just estimating around two hundred. I think I had a projection of a loss of two hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars this year. And so whatever that, two fifty-three, let me see.
Of course. You, you have to take it kind of a bit of overtime and things like this because, you know, in a company, you know, the police department may have to use some overtime due to the spike of crime, you know? You, you know, I'm not saying it quickly. I'm just thinking ahead of time. What does the police may need something, the fire department needs something. So even with the fire department being over, way over on overtime, we still have to project that. You know, we took, we took the hit from them. So, you know, when things happen in the community, we have to make sure that each department is ready for that.
Yeah, I mean, as, as the months go on, we get our financial results in, we, I, I guess the city council will just have to make some adjustments, maybe even monthly, uh, regarding the appropriations that, that, you know, that were made. Uh, you may have to make some adjustments to those appropriations. But like I said, we won't know until we get the results in. And I'm kind of just projecting around like a forty thousand dollar loss uh, each month of the next, starting in August. Because we, in this month, we should get June's payment. And so starting in, in August is when we'll, uh, begin to see the loss.
How much is that monthly payment, Mr. Turner?
On that particular, um, let me look at my budget right quick. That, that particular that, that one is like ninety-five thousand, the jail tax, the Phil's, we have two of them, slightly more. That averages around a hundred and five thousand dollars a month. And the one for the harbor tax, the one that we're losing the revenue, uh, that usually averages around ninety-five thousand dollars a month, somewhere in that neighborhood. That's, that's, that's the fourth loss revenue.
And the way I would say that is basically projected loss revenue and there's actual loss revenue. And you don't know what the actual loss is to actually sustain it, but you look at the projections, looking at what you've been getting, what we got last year. We got, you for that. And you then compare it with other data and try to come up with the best, uh, projection for what, what it would be for this year. And then when the budget was taken into account for twenty twenty, that loss and, uh, and as a result of that, we had like a lot of adjustments leading into this year and in the budget accordingly. But we did, and, and a lot of that was the council's doing. So, um, but I think, Turner, you'll agree with me that because we did project and plan worst, um, hope for the best in our budget, even with those unexpected things, we also try to budget for unexpected things. Now, COVID, Easter storm, uh, those are the things you're talking about, unexpected things. So we, we definitely had to sustain that. But on the other hand, what everybody feared would happen with the loss of income because of COVID actually didn't transpire in our city's case, at least not at the point. We've never had a COVID thing, at least in a hundred years. So we don't really know what that means yet. We've never had a COVID thing, at least in a hundred years, so we don't really know what that means yet, but we haven't seen it so far. Uh, so there's actual, there's projected. Our projected is pretty good. What we continue to have, and will at least, we haven't resolved it yet, is a cash flow. It's a question of when we get our money and when our bills are due, and those are not the same time. And that, that tends to be our biggest problem still.
But I'd like to, to add that I, I feel pretty comfortable with the, the projections like that. We, we have like, uh, actual revenue, I mean, actual results that were used to make the projections since two thousand and five, so we have plenty of historical data. Uh, trends to give, to give a good, uh, a good idea of what's, uh, what the, uh, expected income would be. Uh, we know exactly what the percentage, uh, of that particular tax will be, uh, remitting over to the county, so I, I feel pretty good about the projection, and also, uh, like I mentioned before, the tax base for that particular tax isn't extensive. So even with COVID, most of our tax revenues came from like grocery stores and general merchandise stores and things of that nature that haven't necessarily had, uh, 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 that COVID hasn't had a significant impact on so far. Uh, people still need to eat, people still have to buy, uh, cleaning supplies and things of that nature. So those, those, tho- those sectors that were the major part of our tax revenues haven't been affected so far. And I don't, we had, um, economic studies from the University of Arkansas and the Arkansas Economic Development Commission that, uh, really didn't project significant decreases in those, uh, sectors if COVID didn't last a very long time now. And to, uh, into the near future, we don't expect much of a decrease in those particular sectors. But of course, as the, uh, epidemic goes on and on, it's kind of a little bit more difficult to predict what those losses would be. But in the immediate future, uh, I feel pretty comfortable with the, the, the revenue projections that we, that I came up with earlier in the year. And like I said, I, I'm, I'm thinking somewhere in the neighborhood of a loss of about forty-thousand dollars a month uh, in tax revenue due to the, uh, the change in the, uh, sale tax percentage that we received.
Any other questions about those issues, excuse me? Okay. Thank you very much. I just want, I, I will just finish on one thing. Use of law enforcement resources for masks. Uh, I have posted this, but I'm gonna repeat this as often as I can. We've had more fatalities here from COVID than we have homicides at this point. We've had more people hospitalized because of COVID than we have had from shootings. When there's a homicide or shooting justifiably, justified, we, we, uh, we get pretty upset as a community, and we should. We should be upset at these deaths as well, and it is alarming. And it is, um, if there's a new normal, it shouldn't be that we are uh, taking it for granted that this is somehow not a serious issue. It is, and again, I appreciate your leadership. Please, and the other thing is, if people don't want our law enforcement resources to go to mask, um, if, you know, um, to making people, uh, wear a mask, uh, either great, great, wear a mask. Then you want, you want to worry about our law enforcement resources going to an enforcement of a mask code. To just wear the mask and respect the law and, or be sa- six feet apart, and you won't have to worry about it, and it will save lives. So please repeat that as many, much as you can out there. Any other issues come before the, the, the council tonight? Okay, um, thank you very much. Is there, I can remind you again about the flip the switch event. I hope y'all all can attend in person, you were all very much a part of that. You should be there to celebrate your success story. Um, is there a motion to adjourn?
Andre is trying to say something.
No, I'm sorry, Andre, I could.
No, I wouldn't.
Oh, okay.
I was saying, yeah, just, just go ahead and adjourn. There's nothing else.
I didn't hear, he said that.
Davis.
Andre made the motion.
Davis made the adjournment. Is there a second? No opposition, many's adjourn. Thank y'all very much. Have a good evening.